Hi, everyone. Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order this morning of December 13 at 11:02 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to the board liaison. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Thank you so much. With that, will you please call?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo. Hildegarde Aguinaldo. Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haines.
Here.
Jelena Grande.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
We have a quorum. President Costa.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to proceed with the fledge of allegiance, which I will leave because it's December and busy and I didn't pass my call. Oh, there it is. On the count of three. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. With that, colleagues, is there any discussion on the order of our agenda today? Okay, I am not seeing any with that. I am going to forego my president's report in the interest of time. I'm going to send it over to our fearless leader for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. As we approach the end of the year, it's remarkable to really consider how far we've come. The Calbright team has grown by roughly 75 people this year. Enrollment has more than doubled, and we've surpassed 400 certificates awarded just a few days ago. We've received initial accreditation, increased persistence to the mid-90s, and are starting to see the conversation around Calbright changing, shifting, and in a much more substantial and positive manner. Our students have created an inaugural student body organization, and at this time, I'd also like to recognize Jeremy Cox, who's our first student body organization president. Today, he'll give his final report to the board as he reaches the end of his membership term. By all accounts, we find our stride, but I have a story I'd like to share, really about the journey that we've taken to arrive at this place of strength. Shortly after I became president, as you recall, Calbright was on the receiving end of an extensive state audit, one that seemingly reached into every single corner of the college's operations under the prior leadership. And in many ways, it asserted itself as the source of truth for Calbright, stating things like who our focus population is and editorializing our founding legislation. It established 10 recommendations for the college, which we accepted, and we understood the importance of the transparency that was needed as we sought to course correct. Many of the recommendations the auditor provided had multiple steps. They required, for example, development of a plan followed by implementation, and then multiple years of evaluation and revision in order to be marked as complete. This was a daunting task, one that has required a significant amount of hours and resources for the team to complete. And we've jumped over hurdles. We've taken a constant barrage of negativity from detractors, and we've accommodated constantly moving goalposts, all in an effort to really meet the requirements handed down to us, standards that, I remind you, don't seem to be applied evenly across the community colleges. To borrow a quote from the Divine Comedy, "We knew the way out was just through this process." And so we put our heads down and got to work, and we started to build this new college. We developed and launched new programs and partnerships. We grew enrollment and completions, implemented new student support endeavors, renovated our website, prioritized the student experience, and fundamentally actually reimagined our relationship with the learner in order to meet them where they are and to design around their unique needs. We've always understood the opportunity and the promise of Calbright, and there's a gap in our higher education system that often leaves otherwise adult learners behind. So now, each winter, the state auditor provides an update to the public on the progress of ongoing audits. And I'm pleased to report that they have now classified eight of Calbright's 10 recommendations as fully implemented. And of the remaining two, one focuses on credit for prior learning, which we're now able to work on as we've achieved accreditation this summer, and the other, which is considered partially implemented, relates to continued updates to the legislature, which take many forms for us, including our annual milestone report and efforts of our government relations team to meet with nearly every legislative office in Sacramento. As you know, we provide annual milestone reports to the legislature, as I mentioned, and we have Jenny Johnson and her team have remarkably met with every office in the state senate and assembly. It's our standard practice to be proactive, to learn about the legislature's priorities, and to provide information about our work in these areas. This recognition by the auditor, one of our harshest critics, is a momentous accomplishment for the college, especially since if you squint hard and have a pessimistic mindset, one might even misinterpret the approval of this audit as a backdoor mechanism to shutter the institution. At every step, the Board of Trustees has been in our corner, and I just wanted to express my genuine appreciation for your leadership, for your guidance, your grace, and your dedication to Calbright and its mission. I'd also like to thank Calbright's leadership team, staff, and faculty who supported our work in completing the audit and turning this new chapter in Calbright's story. As we look ahead to 2024, we'll continue to grow and also stabilize. We'll evaluate our student support endeavors and optimize them so that the largest number of students can benefit. And student success, which has always been a Calbright priority, we now are in a position with a substantial student body and the Calbright team to double down on this focus. Our goal is for more students to complete their programs, to do so in timeframes that meet their needs and goals, and to carry that success into the labor market. Many of these initiatives are already in place, and we're seeing early signs of progress, but we have to move with purpose, with confidence, and with speed, and eye towards the long-term sustainability as we accelerate through the remaining years of the startup period. So I look forward to sharing these outcomes with the board in the coming months ahead as part of the implementation of our next strategic vision. But until then, I hope that everyone has a wonderful holiday season and a healthy new year. And many thanks. Thank you to President Costa. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you so very much. With that, we are now in section two of our agenda, which is the closed session portion. We have two items on our closed session agenda. The first is public employee employment performance evaluation, and the second is public employee appointments. The public employment performance evaluations for the president and chief executive officer, and the public employment appointment is regarding the vice president of sustainable growth and district development. Is there any public comment on the closed session item?
There was no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. With that, we expect we will return from closed session somewhere around 45 minutes, give or take. Thank you so much. Okay.
All right.
The second committee is back in open session, and I do have a report out from our closed session. By a vote of six to zero, the executive committee authorized a payment of $30,000 to the president and CEO for receiving a satisfactory performance evaluation in the years of 2021, 2022, and 2023, in accordance with section three of her previous employment agreement. Staff is directed to remit payment in a timely manner after conferring with the president and CEO. Okay, with that, we are now into section four, our action agenda portion. And first up, we have item 4.1, which is approval of the agreement with eLumen curriculum management software. And we have Shannon McCarty, our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, to present.
Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. I am Dr. Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction, and let me first start by saying happy holidays. Over the last few months, my colleagues and I have outlined Calbright's student-centered learning ecosystem. During the last presentation, we started to highlight components of the infrastructure, which we will need to fully actualize our assessment-forward competency-based education model. At the core of our model is our quality, workforce-aligned curriculum. The ability to manage, iterate, approve, and measure, the efficacy of curriculum is essential to our students and the quality assurance of our programs. I am here today seeking approval for a curriculum management learning solution, eLumen platform. The platform provides the data insights, excuse me, sorry, the platform provides a unified space to manage, view, and approve curriculum. More integral to our processes are the data insights that the platform will provide for learning instruction to focus on institutional effectiveness. eLumen mapping and tracking of competencies to assessments will allow our faculty and staff to monitor program learning outcomes. This level of insight allows us to relentlessly improve curriculum, assessment design, and content delivery. I'm sure you can understand the value of this platform and how it is essential to the component of our evolving learning ecosystem. Calbright College is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees for an agreement with eLumen Curriculum Management Learning Solution with a three-year term contract commencing on January 1, 2024, for a not-to-exceed amount of $40,000 per fiscal year plus an initial $15,000 implementation fee.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, is there any comments or questions regarding this item? Or member Haynes?
So, thank you for the presentation. What I'm wondering, I hadn't heard about eLumens, and I, so thank you for the explanation. I'm trying to figure out, are there any other vendors in this space, and what are the elements that really make eLumen the choice of Calbright?
Absolutely, and I anticipated this question because there is another vendor that is called Curricinet and is used by across a lot of community colleges and universities. What made eLumen unique is really the data insights and the visualization that will be extremely beneficial during the program review process. And so, we took a look at both of the systems, and eLumen has a lot of mapping, and then the ability to pull assessment data out of a learning management system, then it feeds back into it, so you can really see how students are doing across institutional learning outcomes, program learning outcomes, and then down to the discrete assessment level. And so, that was something that we thought was very unique to, excuse me, to eLumen versus to the Curricinet platform.
So, I have a follow-up question with regard to that. As I read some of the description, there is real, as I understood it, so please correct me if I understood it incorrectly. There's some real-time data around curriculum and then how the student is working successfully or not successfully within the curriculum. Is that part correct?
I would say it's a little bit of a higher level. Usually, you get that level of discrete detail within your learning management system. And within the curriculum management, it really is how are students assessing against program learning outcomes? And so, you're making sure that students are mastering the higher-level program learning outcomes with equity across your student population.
And is that part in real time?
This will be in real.
You can explain what real time is as opposed to, I'm not suggesting that it's instantaneous, but in so many of our products, you can't, sometimes you can't pull that data in a way that you can actually use it and make iterative change.
I would say real time for like a program review process or looking at student outcomes would be more on a quarterly basis, because you do want to make sure that you have a significant number of students that are working on those assessments, so that you can aggregate that information to a higher level, and then determine how you would want to either intervene by adding additional content, improving an assessment, or just realigning your assessment to your content items. So, you would be able to pull the data like on an ongoing basis, but because you don't want to necessarily change or modify based on just one student outcome, that you really want to have more of an aggregate level of data to look at.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, quarterly is real time. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also hear Board Member Grande has a question. I can't see you, but Hilton tells me you have a question.
Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing this forward to us. Having a curriculum management system is absolutely vital for the curriculum approval process and potentially a lot in the development phase as well. How were faculty involved in the selection of the eLumen product?
Absolutely. So, we had Jessica Shade, who is our faculty curriculum and assessment. She was involved in the process. And then I did meet separately with our academic senate representatives to bring forward and let them know that we were going to be reviewing a curriculum assessment, got their input on both Curricinet and eLumen. They had both been used, and they were fine with either system. So, had the opportunity to show that information across our full-time faculty, but then had Jessica, who will be the most integral kind of stakeholder in leveraging the assessment tool. She was strictly involved in that decision.
Thank you so much. With curriculum being under the purview of the faculty and them populating a number of the items in whatever system you select, I am so grateful that you considered them and let them know that there were options available and that they could select the one that was going to work the best with the curriculum that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Or member Haynes?
I have a subsequent question, and so I am, you know, I sit on the outside of this, and so I have very little understanding of student learning outcomes, SLOs. And so, does this inform SLOs? Does SLOs sort of get pushed to the side, and this becomes the model that is and should be used in tweaking curriculum and then identifying change?
Oh, the curriculum process actually would not change. So, we would be working with our subject matter experts and then working with our curriculum committee and full-time faculty to approve curriculum, and that would be for program learning outcomes as well as more probably of the discrete student learning outcomes or competencies. But what this will do is within the workflow process, it will allow us to manage that and then even do approvals between like the curriculum faculty, and then even for the subject matter experts, and then getting it over to the chancellor's office for approvals. And then what, as we pull in data and kind of see trend data, then we could go back and make iterations or changes to those learning outcomes based on evidence that we're seeing from the assessment results. But that would also have to require kind of approval process, including and involving the faculty at that step.
Thank you.
Is there any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thanks, Teri. With that, I will entertain a motion in a second for members.
I'll move approval. This is member Grande.
Rawlings?
Rawlings with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you. In a snafu of my leadership, of which there are probably many, I went right over the consent agenda. So, let's go back to section three of our agenda and go to the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate votes? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you.
Move approval.
A move from Haynes, who had a second. All right, Epstein with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
I did it. I asked for public comment on consent.
Tom is trying to shadow the president.
I asked for public comment. I had one snafu, not multiple, not yet. But we needed to do that in order to take the next dynamo. So, our order of operations is still intact. Next up on our action agenda, we have 4.2, which is Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development. With that, we have our Vice President of Human Resources presenting.
Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. Based on current organizational needs, Calbright has reconfigured the head of Strategic Growth and Development position to serve as the Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development. This item is to seek approval to appoint Marissa Bowles to the position of Vice President of Sustainable Growth and Development. Under the supervision and direction of the president and CEO or designee, the Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development leads the efforts to establish district functions necessary to achieve the purposes of the college and grow its impact, including new capabilities and innovations designed to build sustainable growth to carry out the mission, objectives, and strategic vision of the college.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, is there any questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, do I have a motion and a second?
Move approval. Haynes.
Second.
All right. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have our information hour, section five of our agenda, and we're starting with item 5.1, which is our Q1 fiscal year 2324 budget update presented by our Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the members of the Board of Trustees. I'm here to present the quarter one 2024 financial results, along with a review of the fiscal year 2023 actual results of Calbright College. There we go. Thank you. Next slide, please. The agenda. The agenda for this presentation includes the Calbright overview, the actual results for the financial year ending 2023, quarter one 2023-2024 update, and next steps. Next slide, please. Next slide. So, the Calbright overview, the Calbright College fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget represents strategic vision goals for 2024, and is based on an explicit assumption of flat annual budget at $15 million. The overall budget for fiscal year 2324 sets ambitious goals to drive towards a new phase of high-quality growth. Calbright College has developed and has already begun implementing a robust implementation and spending plan covering January 2021 through December 2025. Next slide, please. So, I will highlight, this represents the fiscal year 2022-2023 actual results. I'll highlight the major variances regarding the fiscal year 2023 budget for actual results for that period.
Just one moment, because Southern California can't see the slides. Can you guys see them yet?
We can't.
Yeah, but we're going to join the public Zoom.
Okay, listen. Bill, Hildy, and Jelena, can you just tell me when you guys can see the slides?
I can see the slides.
All right, great. Go forward.
So, fiscal year 2023-2023 results. So, going down the financial results, miscellaneous revenues were significantly higher than budget due to the interest revenue gained on our depositive funds. This variance was due to the conservative interest rate assumption in the 2023 budget. Going further down, the expenses of the year, we noted the following. Academic salaries were budgeted at 3.7 million for the year, and we arrived at 3.2 million, which shows that overall, we were close to our budget hiring assumptions. Non-academic salaries were budgeted at 11.7 million, and our actual salaries came in at 7.7 million, an under-budget of 3.9 million. We projected to have 97 non-academic salaries as of year end, and were able to achieve 84. The balance of the non-academic hiring should continue in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2024, and so we're looking forward to that accomplishment. Benefits academic and benefits non-academic are derivative in nature based on the underlying actual employees for each group. Given the small variance of the academic salaries budget to its actual, we would expect a small variance in benefits to be seen too. That's the case with benefits academic. Benefits non-academic has a larger variance compared to budget, given the number of roles that remain unfilled as of 6/3/23, but is expected to be filled by fiscal year 2024. Operating expenses remain under budget, and various expense items such as consultants, which were budgeted at 9.2 million, but this is a timing issue in that these consulting costs are related to program rollouts, which are still projected to occur in fiscal year 2024 and beyond. are related to program rollouts, which are still projected to occur in fiscal year 2024 and beyond. Capital outlay of $7 million attributed for leasing headquarters and other regional offices has been postponed to fiscal year 2024 and beyond. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question? So, those, those funds relative to leasing are carried over or they're just a carryover and a holding spot?
Yes, yes.
Do they fall within the area of discretionary spending or not? Because in other words, if something happened, the floor fell out, is that, can those only be used for leasing or can they be used for other things?
Well, we budgeted for the, our leasing.
I understand that piece. I'm trying to figure out.
Board approves it without purpose.
Right, but I understand that part, but let's say nobody knows what I'm trying to figure out how in an emergency, the floor falls out of the nation, is that, is that, can that be used discretionarily? Or is that facilities and therefore it is stuck relative to that in terms of filling any other gaps?
Given the fact that it's in our budget, we would have to go back to the Board of Trustees to ask for permission to utilize those funds.
Given that, we could change, we could move that money around with the approval of the Board of Trustees.
Assuming the board agrees, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, next slide, please. Okay, great. Next is the quarter one 2024 financial results. So there are very, there are several trends that are important to remember when reviewing these financial results. Specifically, the trends are enrollment has increased to approximately 3,600 students as of October 2023. We have increased employee headcounts, especially in regards to academic roles, workforce, technology, research and data strategy have grown tremendous. As of December 1st, 2023, we have recorded 38 new hires with 19 of those new hires belonging to our Learning and Instruction Department. So we are well underway to hiring that 90 employees that were budgeted for fiscal year 2024. We have rolled out new programs, data analysis, network plus and project management. And our continued growth in enrollment will lead to higher expenses, which will show up in the latter part of this fiscal year. And also, the variances of actual results versus budget are projected to be the lowest when compared to previous years. In other words, we are closer to fulfilling the budget assumptions in fiscal year 2024 than we have since the inception of the college. As a footnote to these results, we expect the next three quarters of actual expenses to be similar to our 2024 budget results, especially in regards to our compensation expenses. Our program launches are on track and we expect the majority of our expenses to occur in the latter part of this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Now, with those trends in mind, let's review the unrestricted funds financial performance. As enrollment has grown, so has our headcount in both academic and non-academic headcount. These new hires will continue to increase to meet the needs for our expanding student population. Academic salaries have increased due to 19 new hires and is on track for the hirings expected in Q1. Non-academic hires increased due to eight new hires. We are projecting that by hiring, we will be fully utilized of our hiring needs by the end of fiscal year 2024. Benefits for both academic and non-academic are in line with the actual headcount. Overall, on a total basis, we're on track against the pro-rata quarter one budget. Next slide, please. So this slide is in regards to our restricted funds financial performance. Interest revenues higher than our prorated Q1 report, noting the higher interest rate percentage that was earned for those funds. Our hiring within the academic and non-academic categories is currently under budget in Q1, but this is truly a timing issue. We have a surge of hiring in October and November and we're expecting to fully hire the unfilled roles by the fiscal year end. The benefits for both academic and non-academic are lower than budget given the employee headcounts. And our actual operating expenses and capital expenses are lower given the timing of the program rollouts. These expenses should gain momentum once the program rollouts become fully realized throughout the balance of this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Next is the combined funds. Overall, our total actual expenditures are lower than budget, but we have started to gain momentum on the hiring front and the program rollouts and the expense generation will be more evident as the fiscal year continues. Next slide, please. Our next steps are, the finance department will continue to give quarterly financial updates throughout this fiscal year and we will present the financial audit results for the period ending 6/3/2023 in the next section.
Thank you so much, Hanya, for the presentation. Colleagues, questions or comments?
Question, yeah. You say that, oh, the restricted funds, we're going to be hiring a bunch of faculty and staff out of that funding and the restricted funds are one-time funds. So are these positions permanent positions or are they temporary positions? How does that work? The one-time expenditure.
It's definitely a mixed, member Epstein. We do plan to have a lot of hiring that will occur within restricted fund balance, but time will tell whether or not those, those roles will gravitate to ongoing, given the fact that a lot of our programs are initial and we're trying to see which roles will continue to be an ongoing role. But right now they're in the startup or restricted, given the programmatic, our startup identity of what we're identifying as initial startup funds.
Maybe it's being additional context for us. So, you know, I think we've been entrusted with the one-time startup funds for the purposes of establishing the model of the college and executing the operational things that have to happen within the course of the startup period and anticipation of growing revenue for the college over time, which is an essential condition of growing the impact and the number of students that we're able to serve. And so when we look at these things, it is not that positions are impermanent. It is that we have to continue to move in the direction of sustainable growth of the core focus of our new strategic vision in the back half of the three-year period, during which time we will have many decisions before the board around how revenue comes into the organization, the ability for us to connect and draw in to per student funding from the state as enrollments increase as well as other sources of funding to support the long-term fiscal health of the organization, but also for its growth and expansion. So I think, you know, these are exactly and essentially the questions that have to be figured out in terms of sustaining the growth of the organization over time so that we can continue to increase our enrollments and the outcomes that we're seeing increasing levels of success around. So I think it's a great question. I also think because we are in, still in the period of our growth and development startup period, these are the, these are the things that we'll continue to build towards.
So the startup funds are used to start up new programs and then
Associated staffing.
Bring in more revenue.
And that's consistent with the purposes of funds defined under our enabling statute. So just to clarify.
For more Haines. Then I want to piggyback on your response and the question in and of itself. So we, we still have runway to the seven years. And I guess what I'm sort of wondering, if we, if Calbright really begins to move relative to this increases, been, you know, 200% increase in student population, that could explode to another 200 very easily.
Yes.
And so, and, and so that, that in and of itself is an explosion, my word. And, and, and the expansion of programs. So those, those are both sort of on parallel paths. Do we get to a place before the seven years in which if we don't have those restricted dollars, that we, we use those restricted dollars to sort of meet that, that we, that there's a problem with, I don't want to use, I don't want to use the term insolvent.
We're not creating future deficit scenario. What we are creating is an opportunity for us to expand what the functionality of the college and what the college is capable of doing at scale. And I want to emphasize that point because I think the point that you're starting to get to, which is a real point is that it's not explosive growth, it's managed growth. And we have to responsibly, we have to responsibly be working continuously at the way in which we organize our increases to enrollments. But you are absolutely right that the college does need and will need additional revenue to serve more students over time. That is an essential condition, not just of setting up the college for success, which is what the period we're in, in the startup period, but for really being able to realize the, the goals of the college overall in terms of addressing the needs that are out there in the state of California amongst this population of learners. So that's a, that's an important part of how we're looking and why I keep using the words, you know, sustainable growth or making sure that we are being responsible with the expansion of the college and the expectations that are out there about the growth of enrollment size for the college relative to being able to ensure that those students have public financial support as, as we grow to impact our students.
So I have a follow-up question to that, or maybe it's more of a statement. So I really appreciate that, that response. And so I'm hoping that there's, there is some, some discussion, some the states, the state uses an appropriation process for, for public education for community colleges.
Yes.
And, and there, we would argue that it's inadequate, but that is sort of
I might argue it's inequitable.
That's right. And that's, and that's on the rail, that's on the railroad. That's on that, the rail. And so I absolutely support another stream of revenue used, but I also want to, just want to say sort of for the record, we, we have, maybe, maybe Calbright is in a position to sort of figure this piece out. This is a public institution and we cannot forget that and, and, and we need to be very clear about that piece because I would hate for it to, to sort of swing over to this idea of private institution for, for lack of, for lack of enough funding.
Yes.
So I just want to make certain that everybody's crystal clear that this is a public institution that should demand based on its successes to be funded equitably relative to that.
That's right. I mean, I think the number one prevailing lesson that we stand on right now is not just the need for the college in the abstract, but the need for the college in great specificity.
Absolutely.
Our students themselves, our nearly 4,000 students, tell us that the reason that education is made possible, that they have an entry point into the system, is because we have provided a flexible opportunity for them.
And because it's free.
And because it is free and, and, and because it is affordable. And I, and I emphasize those two points because this is exactly the place where the public purpose of the college and the public need to, to continue to drive resources to support a population of learners you otherwise won't have an access point. That is, that is the challenge to figure out. That was part of the reason the college was created and we plan to make good on that promise of, of being able to figure out part of that equation.
Let me qualify this issue around free because what Calbright does not have as a burden is trying to find housing, trying to find food, trying to find, you know, childcare services. We may end up in that pot, but, but we do not. So the, the total cost of, the total cost for community colleges out there is, is real and it is definitely more than one in order to go to UC or CSU because of those other costs. And so our students have they, they, they have not told us that, nor have we been able to, we're
I might say, I might maybe qualify that if you'll allow me.
Yeah, please.
I would say that a lot of our students have a lot of those needs. We are not in a bricks and mortar sense.
Position.
Creating programs or buildings for the purposes of connecting folks to those services. We are seeing the need to connect them in community as a digital college to resources that are, are available to them that they are eligible for and how do we continue to get better and better at connecting to those resources? But I, but this is not a low-cost model and it's important to, to note that out. This is not a cheaper way to deliver education. Because what we find and what we understand, again, leaning on the learnings from our learners themselves, it is that, this is the supports that we have. It is both the way that technology enables scale and the way that human interaction actually promotes educational success and career success. And those two things have to happen on and on. And that's very different from the online conversation in other states, frankly. Oftentimes, people seek online as a revenue generator for the college as an ancillary program or in a way to accommodate what they're describing as preference shifts that students had. But it's not about, it hasn't been about, at least the conversation, as much about thinking about how does technology enable or optimize the actual human experience that we need to have with our learners? And, and that's, that's the importance of the model. That's also the science of the model. So the reason that we talk so much in this room and in these conversations around data and around making sure that we have the capabilities to regularly assess not just the progress of the institution, but the efficacy of what we do is because this is the learning curve right now for us in public higher education, for us as a system. And it's why I think we will see, especially for this community of learners, us as an institution continuing to contribute in really important and meaningful ways for the challenges of our time switching. Includes what are the most effective interventions? Is it scaffolding schedules? Is it a more streamlined onboarding and enrollment process? Is it easier application process future, in the future for financial aid for other things like this? We become the environment in which the rubber meets the road and we can, we can really share out with our colleagues, with our sister colleges and even more broadly, the types of transformations we need to see in the systems that, that have prevented access.
I'm so glad I asked the question. Thank you for that.
Not seeing any other colleagues with their hands raised. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, thank you so much. You're up again, Hanya, item 5.2.
Thank you.
We have our report, as you mentioned, on, on our audit of financial statements on compliance and our governance letter.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Taylor Ulrich, Signing Director, and Lauren Broughton, Director, who will present the audit financials of Calbright College.
Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you for inviting me to review the results of the district's annual audit report. My name is Taylor Ulrich. I'm a signing director with the audit firm Clifton Larson Allen. Our independent auditors report can be found on page one and is where we give an audit opinion of the financial statements and related notes, which begin on page nine. It's, for this year, it is an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion and it's the highest that can be given and states that the financial statements are presented fairly and in accordance with proper accounting principles. To highlight some other parts of the audit report, page 40 is where we have the, where we were, we report whether there are any adjustments to the annual financial and budget report, the 311 and the audited financial statements. And on that page, you can see that there are no audit adjust, there are no adjustments to those reported amounts in the current year. The only adjustments you see there are the normal conversion entries to get to the fund statement reporting model to the reporting type that's done in the audit, in the audit report, the business type activities model. As part of your audit, we also issued two other opinions that can be found beginning on page 44. One is the independent auditor's report on internal control or financial reporting and on compliance. Under government auditing standards, we're required to give an opinion on whether we, there are any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls or on the final reporting or on non-compliance. And our opinion there is that we did not come across any. And so is another clean opinion there. And then lastly, on page 46, the independent auditors report on state compliance, the state of California requires us to test compliance areas related to state funding or programs. The full list of those programs and whether or not we tested them can be found on page 48. We must review and report any compliance findings that we discover. And we did have one audit finding that we were required to report, but this, this did not cause us to modify our opinion that the district complied with the laws and regulations of the state programs in all material aspects. As mentioned, we did have the one, and it was a recurring finding from the prior year related to the 50% law being out of compliance, but no other state or financial statement findings to report. And then just lastly, as part of our audit, we provide a letter to governance as part of fulfilling our standards. And then just lastly, as part of our audit, we provide a letter to governance as part of fulfilling our standards, which require us to disclose to those charged with governance if we have come across any certain items discovered during the audit process. This would include difficulties, disagreements with management, consultations with other auditors, audit adjustments and those sort. And in that letter, we did not have any of those items to report to the, to the governance. So with that, we'd like to express our thanks to the district staff for helping us, provide us all the information we needed to do our job and to complete the audit. And if there are any questions or comments on the audit report.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Colleagues, any questions? I just want to say, good job.
Thank you.
Really nice to get a clean audit. And obviously, kind of like our budgeting, I've seen a lot of growth here. So I just want to congratulate you and the rest of the finance team for some truly remarkable work.
Thank you. Very quickly, I just want to say thank you to CLA, Taylor and Lauren in regards to getting us to this point with their help in regards to meeting the objective of our audited financials on a time basis. Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to add my congratulations to such a successful audit. It's, it's come a long way. That's great. The, this is a really, really minor thing. But on page ten, there's a line item that says grants and contracts include federal and local.
Yes.
Grants and contracts. Can you explain?
Yes, that grant is called a Cadence Grant. It stands for the California Advanced Defense Equosystems and National Consortium Effect. It is a grant that was funded by the DOD or Department of Defense, and so that's why we categorize it as a federal grant.
And what is it for?
It is for internships for advanced manufacturing.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. All right, we have your final item, our standing item, which is a report on contracts and purchases.
Thank you. There were five contracts executed in November twenty twenty-three and purchasing, purchases totaling three hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, any questions on the contracts? Seeing that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much, Anja. Next, we move to section six of our agenda. We have our constituency group reports. And first up, we have President Michael Stewart of the Academic Senate.
Good afternoon, President Costa and Vice President Aguinaldo. As we close out this year, the Calbright College Faculty Senate is pleased to highlight several positive developments within the learning and success departments in this year in report. Our talented faculty has driven meaningful improvements over the past year, supporting student success and academic excellence. With that being said, we'll step into instructional and non-instructional faculty updates. Instructional faculty members have actively participated in several significant statewide committees, including the Academic Senate for California Community College Resolutions Committee, the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges Online Education Committee, and the Chancellor's Competency-Based Education Initiative. Additionally, our faculty has participated as a part of the Chancellor's twenty thirty General Tiv A Artificial Intelligence and Higher Education Webinar Series and presented at the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges Fall Plenary on Academic and Professional Policies Regarding AI. And just on a side note, President Costa, again, no acronyms, so those were a mouthful. That was for you. And moving on to our counseling faculty updates, the counseling faculty has conducted targeted outreach to better support students by providing essential instruction and engagement. They have also assembled skills, excuse me, skills team to adjunct instructors to increase support for new and struggling learners. And furthermore, they curated job listings that aligned with Calbright's programs of study and prepared them, prepared the students' portal for Slack distribution, which resulted in increased student access and usage. The department also developed and offered a task or test task anxiety workshop and launched a counseling video pilot, which resulted in improved engagement with students. And additionally, polls were implemented and a new onboarding to provide counselors with better understanding of student needs. Now we will move on to our program updates. We will start with IT five hundred and IT five-ten. The faculty organized live events to increase student engagement and foster community building. These events are centered around topics related to the comp T exam preparation and job-related technical skills, focusing on three key areas to ensure student success. Those areas were high certification pass rates, A-plus cohort curriculum enhancement, and student engagement and feedback. For IT five twenty and IT five twenty-five, the program has grown to include over seven hundred actively enrolled students, developing a program to provide opportunities for students to sit for more practice exams and preparation for the cert exam, excuse me, certification. And new content has been added to align with Salesforce Winter twenty twenty-three release. Next up, we have medical coding. Medical billing course is now, the course outline and record was created and expected to launch in twenty twenty-four. We also have seen a one hundred percent pass rate for the students taking the cert exam for medical coding. And our faculty has held more student events to increase engagement and completion. And for WF five hundred course, successfully integrated students into the new version of the course, which had updated content from the old version. We've seen a proactive outreach efforts that have had positive impact on the students. We've also provided competency-based education options, including a resume review with the counselor. And our new courses that we'll be launching, our new Network Plus course was developed, tested, and is launching this week for student enrollment. Our project management course is developed, testing with program launch expected in the spring. And data analysis is redesigned and successful, and has a successful program launch. And in closing, Calbright faculty understand that the students are our North Star, so we have been working relentlessly to support student success. We drive positive outcomes by bringing passion to our work of increasing engagement through community-building initiatives, focusing on evidence-based solutions, providing additional instructional resources, and implementing creative strategies to enhance student progress, retention, and completion rates. We acknowledge that developing quality online competency-based education opportunities presents the unique challenge. Thus, we are leading the creation of innovation approaches to interactive content, blending learning models, targeting outreach initiatives, and expanding tutoring and advising services. The faculty is committing to, committed to meeting the needs of our students as we continue to develop effective strategies that align with Calbright's mission and providing affordable and inclusive education for Californians. And before I close, on behalf of the Academic Senate, I would sincerely like to thank Terry Lucas for her invaluable guidance, patience, and support as we prepared multiple presentations for the board over the past year. Pulling together collaborative reports, reflecting insights from our faculty across disciplines is no small task. But Terry has partnered with us in every way and every step of the way. So thank you, Terry.
Thank you so much for your report. We appreciate it. Next up in our constituent reports, we have the Faculty Association Report presented by President Cindy Kearney.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and esteemed members of the board. I am happy to be here today to provide a report on the activities of the Calbright Faculty Association. My report today will focus on updates for twenty twenty-three CFA accomplishment, bargaining, and evaluations. Faculty evaluations are in progress, and we are waiting on the final meetings with results for our faculty. We have several founding faculty who are up for tenure this cycle due to their meaningful contributions since twenty twenty. We are currently in bargaining and addressing our top priorities, which include working conditions, equitable salary, and overload and benefit to align with other community colleges. Our most recent session was held on twelve, five, twenty-three, and our next one is scheduled for twelve, nineteen, twenty-three. In other updates, the Calbright Faculty Association currently has a hundred percent participation of our fourteen full-time faculty. It has been exciting to see such growth in our CFA. I had the opportunity to attend two of the twenty twenty-three California Community College Association conferences in April and October this year. At the spring conference in April, Calbright received two awards in recognition for the growth of full-time members, as well as I was featured in the CCA Advocate Newsletter for July of twenty twenty-three as a changemaker in attending my first CCA conference. In attending the fall conference in October, I was asked if the CCA could recognize Calbright's Faculty Association for the growth we have had over the past year as a November, as the November chapter of the month. It has been an exciting twenty twenty-three, and I am looking forward to what the upcoming year will bring in terms of stronger collaboration toward building the infrastructure that will allow our institution to fully embody our mission and consistently center the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. Appreciate it. This month, we do not have a report from the School Employees Association. So next up, we'll move to our student body organization presented by President Jeremy Cox. You're on mute, Jeremy. We want to hear what you're saying. There you go.
Thank you. I have to keep it on mute for the little one, so you don't hear screaming in the background. Thank you for having me today, Board of Trustees. My name is Jeremy Cox. I'm the student body president, and I wanted to share some exciting news. As we enter the winter season, Calbright College now has clubs. Back in November, we launched the Secret Society of Nerds Who Carry Yarn and Multi-Potential Art Club. So now our students have more avenues to connect, engage, and build community at Calbright. We have had more interested students and advisors looking to start their own clubs as well. And I wanted to thank the Office of Student Engagement for their support in creating these opportunities for our students. Second, we are coming up to our second Bright Stars Awards. We're excited to celebrate our Calbright community and recognize those, excuse me, who we know embrace the student experience. And similarly, we will have the holiday events that are planned to close out twenty twenty-three, and we hope to see you all there. Finally, we are holding our student body organization elections for twenty twenty-four. We're excited to transition into new leaders who will, who will continue the great work that the current SBO has done in the first year as a student government. Thank you to all of our current and past SBO members for getting us to this point. And as I conclude my last report for the twenty twenty-three, as the SB, twenty twenty-three SBO president, I want to say it's been an amazing year and my pleasure serving our students at Calbright College. You've given me the opportunity to lead our students, strengthen the student body voice, and contribute to a community that supports me. Please know that the time that you spend, the conversations that you have, and decisions that you make are felt by the students. And because of you, we are able to be successful as we continue our educational journey. I hope that these past reports have been a reflection on all the great work that all of you have done for us. And as always, thank you for your time and all the work that you do.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. We really appreciate you as our inaugural president of the student body organization. And I think I speak for all of my colleagues when I say we really appreciate these updates because it gives us a little bit, outside of the technical stuff we deal with, a viewpoint into the student experience and what's happening at the student level. So thank you so very much for serving in this role and really helping to start and grow the student body organization. We appreciate you. With that, we have ended our constituency group reports, and we're now in the public forum portion of our agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
All right, seeing that, and with the business of the Board of Trustees Executive Committee now complete, we can adjourn. Thank you for your participation.